I'm calling this meeting for the city council regular meeting, December the 9th, 2013, at 6:04. Ms. Murdock, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor James Halls?
Here.
Excuse me. Mayor Protim Guthrie?
Here.
Dennis Perkins, Jr.?
Here.
Greg Richards?
Here.
Frank Jackson?
Here.
And Grace Adams?
Here.
We have a forum.
We all rise, do our invocation of the pledge of allegiance to our God.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask you to be with us tonight as we meet together at this meeting. We ask that everything we do be pleaded out to you. Lord, we ask you to be with the Carter family at this time of their loss. Just bless them and comfort them as only you can. We ask you to watch over the city. We thank you for the clearing of the roads and the highways. And we just thank you that you're in charge of the weather. Ask you to forgive us for the times we've sinned against you before asking in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to our God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent items. Approval of the city council minutes for November 11th, 2013.
I read those minutes and I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I've got a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. I have a second by Councilman Richards. All in favor? Okay. Only approval of the city council minutes. Approval of the bills?
Make a motion we approve the bills.
Councilman Guthrie want a motion to approve the give bills. Second. Councilman Perkins, second. All in favor? Unanimous? Approval of earned compensation, compensatory time.
I make a motion to approve the compensatory time?
Second.
I've got a motion for approval on the compensatory time. And I've got a second by Councilman Richard. All in favor? Okay. See, it's approved. All right, moving on to number three. Ms. Murdock, do we have any citizens' comments?
Joan Grabowski?
Ms. Joan?
Hello.
How are you doing on your city?
I'm fine. This is my forged request, I believe, to ask the city council to pass an ordinance that limits terms for councilmen and mayor. And I had some other comments, but I'm going to withhold them because it doesn't do any good anyway. That's all I have.
Jimmy Halls?
I prefer to defer mine to the fire department, actually, on the fire station. That's okay.
I didn't hear what you said. I didn't understand what you said, Jimmy.
I prefer to defer my comments and talk about the fire station. If that's okay.
Yes, sir. That'll be fine, Mr. Halls. Anybody else?
Annette Mueller?
Hi. My name's Annette Mueller. I just wanted to let you know how excited I am about all the new water improvements. And I'd like to also say that I think Dean has done an outstanding job at overseeing it and has been in control of it.
Anybody else?
That's all.
Okay. Moving on to from citizens' comments, we're going to go to number four, department reports. Police Department, animal control, code enforcement. Chief Field?
Mayor, city council members, public, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Really, not a whole lot to report on crime stats. We did make some improvements over last month. We had a little bit of increased crime, but it's gone back down. And I expect it to keep doing that throughout the year. We are down a little bit on citations, but I fully expect that once the weather gets a little better, we should get better on that. And arrests are pretty much even. One thing I did want to point out is the number of calls for service. We went from 233 last year to 407 this year. We have a tremendous amount of calls for service, which includes also officer-initiated activity, which means that they're out there in the cold weather taking care of business. One thing I did want to say is publicly say how proud I am of my officers on how they dealt with and responded to the Milford gas explosion. They were, along with the county, were responsible for the evacuee shelter site at the Italy ISB. We had that covered 24 hours a day, generally with two officers on at a time. It was handled very well by Sergeant Martin who handled it that weekend. Very proud of their efforts and what they did. I know that Milford residents have a lot of good things to say about how well they were treated here and accommodated. I think that's a very good deal. That's pretty much it. I mean, we're going into the holiday season and I'm hoping that things kind of calm down a little bit and we don't get any bad weather. I've had some... I had this morning, I was on my way to work and a car spun out over on a bridge in Alvarado right in front of me. I was able to get stopped in time. Solid sheet eyes, except for when I got stopped and put my lights on to wait for Alvarado's response, about 10 different semi trucks almost jackknifed into me. So it's been a very hairy couple of days for the officers and for me coming to work. And I was thankful that cars, okay, I'm okay, everybody's okay. While we were there, three cars overturned on the bridge. It's been kind of a bad thing where over in Burleson still, but here, thankfully, we ended up with not a whole lot of bad stuff. We were prepared. I do want to thank Mayor Protim Guthrie for helping us prepare for the worst, which I think is why we didn't have anything, because every time we prepare for the worst, we get the best. So we had a car already with the chains on, ready to go, and we had a set of tires with chains on it to swap out with another car. So we were ready to go. As soon as it was going to get bad, we were going to have cars to get to emergency.
Yes, I saw that. And getting back to your officers and the response, I think everything went just like clockwork. I'm very proud of what you've put together and what Terry's put together and the way everybody handled the situation. It was just like a well-oiled machine.
I owe that to good officers.
Yes.
That's the best thing I can say.
I didn't hear anything but praises on the officers. Very good thing.
Well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works Department, Dean Carroll?
Counsel, Joan, this is for you. 481, we were down, but it was still, you know, with the ice and everything else and everybody being gone, we still did 481 for you.
Much better.
That's still quite a bit. We did a 5.58 percentage in water loss this month. We were down to two and three, so I've got to work on it a little bit more and figure out where that's going. The meters we have are over a year old now, so some of them are going to have to be recalibrated and we sort of have to get them up to make sure they're working properly. But all in all, 5.5 is still a good number, one of the better numbers around. The tank project, we're at our final stage of it. We're doing our final walkthroughs. They still have 24 outstanding problems that they have to fix. And their completion date is December 23rd, so we're pushing it. They've got a lot to do between now and then.
Is the tank full of water?
The tank is three quarters full right now. We painted the metal tank. Whenever we filled up the concrete tank, we noticed that the metal tank was pretty bad. Do you have pictures of it? Yeah. If you want, there's pictures here. You can come and take a look at them. I don't think we need to pass them around unless you want to. We did that, man. Everybody can look at them. Jack used to bring them today. Show them. But it shows, what it shows is, is when this tank was put in service, it was never primed. They just shot a coat of paint on it. So wasn't... It's not going, obviously, it's not going to last very long, and it's eaten up the metal. There were several places, in the bottom of the floor, there's a knife. Is that your, was it your knife?
Yeah.
Jackie's knife? There is a... So the tank had been leaking for quite some time. There was actually a knife stuck in the floor, so you can attend one of the pictures. We intended to just drain it and clean it out, put it in service, but when we drained it, we noticed it started flaking real bad. Next thing you know, all that will be in the water system, so we went ahead and made the decision to get it painted and taken care of. So it's good for another 10, maybe 15. Are you sandblasting inside? Oh, it was all sandblasted. Went back to tenebriant. All the seams were primed, and then the tank was primed, and then it was painted with tenebriant paint. If you want to, you can take a look at the pictures and take a look at it. It was, it's very nice. It'll last us a long time. Not as long as a concrete tank, but it'll last us a long time. We really needed it. Let's see. This is the first, first code spell since I've been here that we have not had one overtime problem. The water system ran just like it was designed to. As a skated system, if there's any kind of issue or glitches, it pops up and takes, we can take care of it. Clean it ourselves. But this is the first time, and I don't know how many years it's been, but the pumps didn't go down, we didn't go without water, nothing happened. It worked as it should. So I was so proud of that. And I believe that will do it.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Okay, under department reports, we're going to F for Fire Department?
We have a report.
We have a...
We got it.
Okay. Did you need to say anything?
Chief? No. With, what, 18 calls this past month, I think, or it was something like that, 18 and 19?
19.
19.
We're at 280 for the year, so that gives you an idea. I ran hours the other day for the fire. Meeting hours and man-hours on fire calls, it's about 1,800 so far, man-hours this year. So, yeah, I spent a lot of time.
Well, yeah, no, you went to the pipeline explosion also, were you not?
I suppose it was right there.
Yeah, that was a... You did a fine job. All of you mean did. Okay. Moving on to G, municipal court. Court, Ms. Martin?
Yeah.
You want to read? Or is public corner here?
Citation filed by IPD, Italy Police Department was 188. Warning citations filed were 30. Citations by ACO, animal control, was zero. Citations for code enforcement was five. Warrants cleared were 31. There were no collection letters, zero warrants issued, and warrants cases closed were zero. We had a little glitch with our computer program, the system. That's why we haven't had, didn't have any of that this month.
M.C. Administration, Ms. Murdock?
Mayor and Counsel, thank you so much. I'd like to also say thank you to the Italy Police Department and the Fire Department and to all the volunteers and the Red Crossers there, business and organizations that helped out with the Milford evacuation. We sent Rhonda over there two days on Thursday and Friday, and she's gotten two commendation letters, one from Johnny Brown, and I don't recall who the other one was from, but saying that she had done an outstanding job helping with the evacuees. We haven't received sales tax yet for this, for December, that usually will come in the next couple of days. I've been attending the hazardous mitigation action plan meetings on December 3rd is the last one we had. We're now working on identifying and rating the hazards. Each hazard must have documentation, including narratives and pictures if available. Matt, with the department hits today, and we identified and rated those hazards. Now we just have to proceed with it so we can get narratives and that type of thing. Still working on the home grant applications. They've been, the application itself has been revised, which has to be completed. The hazard mitigation took up quite a bit of my time this morning. I've been working with the auditors, that takes up time. And so I've got this home grant application that I plan on working on tomorrow to get that completed and so we can get that submitted. We'll be doing a resolution once we get that portion of it done for approval by city council so that we can proceed with that. The election law seminar is January the 15th through the 17th, and we will probably, Rhonda and I will probably be signing up for that tomorrow. And then the community center, I just want to give you an update on that. It's been seeing more activity. November, the center was used in the 23rd and the 28th, and is currently rented for December 12th and 13th, and also on January the 25th. I do already have reservations for June, Friday and Saturday in June for graduation. So I've got, I've got those two already booked.
Are we advertising that anywhere?
I have not done that yet. I've been working on audit and mitigation, and so we haven't...
You haven't really been pushing any advertisement on Civic Center?
I'm sorry?
Civic Center.
Right. No, I have not posted that yet. I wanted to post that on the Neo trip and...
We should be getting that.
But it's getting out, and people are utilizing it right now.
Okay, moving on to regular session, number five. Okay, number one is going to be discussing considering necessary actions regarding approval and payment of $2,532.45 to Harris Body Shop for repair of police vehicle 532.
Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself if you'll discuss this.
Ms. Murdock, was, or Chief, what, can you tell us about this?
Yeah, 532 was struck while an officer was on their way to a train in a nearby city by a motorcycle. Struck the vehicle in the rear. The motorcycle unfortunately did not have insurance, so we had to go through TML. We got the, TML came out, they did a, looked at the vehicle and did their figures, and that's how much exactly it cost to get it fixed, minus our stickers that we still got to get a secondary...
This is less the $250 deductible that we have.
Right.
That the city has to pay. The, what's it called here? We have already received a check less the $250 deductible for $2,282.45 from TML.
How much was that again?
The total cost of the repairs was $2,532.45.
Oh, the check amount.
And then less the $250, the check amount was $2,282.45.
Okay. Did we get any bids on this?
On insurance claim, you take, you can take that anywhere you choose to take it of the vehicle.
And TML specifically requested it go to Harris Body Shop because they've worked with them on several different occasions.
So basically, bottom line is, we're just out $250. Is, are we trying to recoup that?
That's just the, I mean, the, what we have to pay, the deductible.
Yeah.
So we're not really, you know...
Is there any way to recoup that from whoever owns it?
TML will have to, if it is recouped, it'll be through TML. They will go after them subsequently.
And they have already started that process.
Okay. And I make a motion we approve this. I have a feeling it's Harris Body Shop.
I sent the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion on table to pay the amount of $2,532.45 to Harris Body Shop. And I have a second by, was it Chief Frank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Passed. Okay. Would you, thank you, Chief. Discussing considering necessary actions regarding the approval of the agreement of service with the Waukesha Police Department for the City of Waukesha Animal Shelter Services and Charges. Chief, do you want to explain some of this?
Yes. Unfortunately, Waukesha has now included their animal shelter, instead of being under Public Works, it's now under the Police Department with Waukesha. And because of that, Waukesha PD has increased their fees substantially, and it's going to cost us a whole lot more money to take our animals over to Waukesha for, especially if it is a, an unclaimed dog or cat or something. The fees went up, let me see, I don't have that. The fees went up for 72-hour hold, the boarding of an animal is $41. It used to be 20, right?
I think so.
20. Also, they're going to charge us for ACO after-hours callouts, meaning if we have something with a rabid dog or a dangerous dog or something that we need to get there at 3 o'clock in the morning, if we have to have them come meet us at the animal shelter to let us in, then it's going to cost us $200 for that, for that cost. Right. Now, the, all we need is, this is a temporary thing. We're having a training retreat next week, and a part of the training retreat is that all the officers have to have some type of a presentation to make our department or something about the police department better. And luckily, Officer Shelby landed, or Richardson, sorry, has come up with an idea, a plan to possibly have a holding facility, a more permanent, well-built holding facility here for Italy. And that's still in the process of us discussing it. It will, I will get more information hopefully by our next city council, and I will present the plan to the city council at that time. So even though we need to, we need to go ahead and approve us, you know, the new fees that we have to deal with for Waukesha, in the meantime, we're working on getting away from them altogether and it not costing us anything.
You're talking about being self-sufficient here?
Yes. We have a site, we have a plan, we might even have the concrete donated for that, as far as pouring the concrete where we're going to have it.
Where's the site donated?
Over by the, the...
By the police?
Yeah, the police.
Farm?
The police barn, the garage.
Can we find a better site than put it?
Well, the thing about that is, and I got to thinking about it, okay, when dogs bark, they, it's going to, and obviously, they're going to bark in the animal shelter, it's going to bounce off buildings and such. The good thing is, is that the way our garage is facing, it's not going to cause any problems with sound or anything, because all we have is just right across the street is mantles. So, and it should drown out by the time it even gets to Dallas Street or anywhere.
I just, I just think we should find a better place than, I mean, it's right there on the main drag, you know?
Yeah.
I think we should find a better place than that.
And, and like I said, we will talk about the location. The only thing about that is, is that the people that's going to be pouring concrete there for them are going to have some leftover, and that was going to be convenient for them to be able to put it right there, because they're going to be pouring concrete over there by the water, and they're going to donate it.
I understand, but...
But we can look at different areas. I definitely would.
I just don't think it would look that good up there.
Who will be, be in charge of, like, feeding the dogs?
The police officers will be.
So that's...
Yeah.
That won't be any extras?
Nope. And we're working on increasing our number of volunteers with the police department. We might even look at possibly having somebody in the city as a volunteer to help us clean up and feed them on occasion, when officers are busy.
What about microchiped animals?
That has, you have to take those to a veterinarian where they can scan it. The scanners, you could probably get them, they're not very cheap, they're pretty expensive to buy. But we can take them to any veterinarian and they'll scan it for us for free.
Because when I first moved here over a year ago, the family's house that we took over had a great majority of cats that were all microchipped, 18 of them, and some of them were sent elsewhere.
Well, there's no requirement for us to check for microchips on an animal, but it is a good service, and I do agree that we should do that on occasion. Problem is, is the equipment that you use for it is expensive, and we can't afford that right now.
Joe, are we talking about, like, when y'all get a, you know, a dog called, it's wandering around everywhere?
The officer picks it up, takes it to the shelter, gets it set up in the shelter. We try to locate the owner, we give them 72 hours, and if not, then the animal would be euthanized.
Are grants available for this?
No. Most of the grants are, especially for animal shelters and stuff, are sequestered. There's not, but this is going to be very minimal cost. Matter of fact, we should be able to recoup our costs within the first year, I think, if we build it.
So if we approve this agreement, we're not out of any money?
No, we're just...
Only if we have to do a service, like do a service for it.
Right. Just realize that some of the fees that we create, you will see an increase in the cost of animal control until we can come up with a better, better situation. Is that it?
Okay, is there a water, is there a water hydrant over there to wash whatever we need to wash and where the debris may go?
Coming from one of the marshes?
I don't think it is, but, I mean, we can always tap that one a lot.
Okay. We're just discussing about what...
We haven't really decided we're going to put it there or not.
Right. Our first step is to talk about the feasibility and the, how we're going to build it, and then we'll start working on the actual cost of the curve, and then we'll look at the location that would be the best for the city.
Okay, yeah, but getting back to the agenda here, this is, we're discussing in, in regard to the agreement with Waukesha.
Yes. I didn't want to confuse it, but I also wanted to give you enough information to know that, yeah, we're going to be spending a little bit more money until we can come up with a better plan.
Okay.
But hopefully, this is just temporary.
Yeah, hopefully, it's going to be temporary if we can get this other funding.
This is, this is a cost item, and you're trying to fix it where we don't have, it don't depend on another city.
Yes.
I make a motion we approve this regarding the agreement service, and hopefully, it'll just be a temporary thing. I've got a, I've got a first on the table for this, this contract with the City of Waukesha Police Department. I've got a second by Councilman Utley. All in favor? All in favor? Four? Okay. Chief, would you go?
You can get him?
Yes, yes, sir, please.
Because he's with...
He excused himself because he works for the Police Department in the City of, uh, Waukesahatchie and might be a conflict of interest. Okay, item K, discuss and considering necessary actions regarding the appointment to one position to the Economic Development Corporation Board from applications submitted. We've got, uh, Jackie Dwayne Kate. There's Nancy Galloway. Is it just two?
Any positions, one?
No, one position.
I thought we had two.
No, just one.
Was it, uh, Mr. Stiles?
Mm-hmm.
That's his position that we're trying to, we're going?
Well, his...
Not his position, but, uh, a board member?
Yes.
This is a tough decision.
Have we filled our other committee that we're looking for, or is the Community Action Committee?
Um, we probably have, but they haven't because of the Christmas holiday, the thing that...
Okay. So decision between Jackie Kate and Nancy Galloway.
Can you put both of them on?
No, we can't.
Can you put one in waiting? Can you do that?
I'll make a nomination for Jackie Kate's.
I've got a motion on, on four for, uh, Jackie Kate's. We've got a second by Councilman Richards. All in favor? Got everybody in, in, and Mr. Pastner. The next, the next ones will be... Item L, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding a request from the Italy Opry to build an extension to the stage at the community center. Mr. Martin, did you, who?
This was put on the, on the agenda because it was actually tabled to this agenda last month. However, from, uh, Don Chambers told me that they're not going to have the money to put in the whole stage at twelve-hundred dollars. So...
What I'd like to do is just, just put this on hold until they can get the money. We'll probably come back later when they get some more money to, uh, to do this so we can take this off of business.
We can just add it when they get, um...
So, so item L, we're just going to do no action?
No action.
Next, item M, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding putting a fire lane at the fire station due to the ability to exit the fire, fire equipment in emergency. I guess that should be vehicles, uh, tabled from nine-nine, two thousand thirteen. Who wants to discuss this? Uh... Mr. Howells, is this where you wanted to talk?
No one has come up with a solution. Maybe I have a solution.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, was somebody going to do a survey on this?
We have ordered a survey. Um, I heard, I've called, actually, I've called two people and one of them called me back today. Um, we had discussed it several weeks ago about doing the survey and he was going to, I was told he was going to jump right on it. We found the, um, the, uh, survey, uh, or the deed to the property. I sent it over to him, then he called today saying that he was fixing to start working on this and that he'd never received the survey. So I resent that to him again. But he did say he was working on it.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes.
I started this thing several months ago and I apologize for not being there that night, but there were lots of things that didn't go on and I had to leave before y'all got to this part. But anyway, uh, basically, I'm not asking you to do a whole lot, other than buy the signs to put back up there that were there to start. You know, the signs that are on the fire station are, have been there forever and a day. They're faded, they need to be replaced. There was fire lines and fire lanes are, uh, already established there with signs across the streets, both on the bank side of the parking lot and behind the buildings that are there existing now. One of the demolitions for the old community center went on. Those signs that were on the back of the building disappeared. And, you know, I'm just, I'm asking you to buy the signs and let's put them back up to get this thing going.
Okay, I got, I got a question. Mr. Carroll?
Yes, sir.
Did, did we get, did we get a, uh, one of those machines that...
We have not purchased the machines yet, no. I, I had a, I have a question because if I'm not mistaken, it's either twenty-five foot, even though that was an alleyway, it's still twenty-five foot. Am I right?
Twenty and seventy-five.
Twenty-five and seventy-five. So... I, I don't, I would have to agree with Don on this point. The alleyway's still an easement. Number one reason is the water tower and all the water lines. There's a ten-inch water line underneath that thing. But, uh, there is a twenty-five and seventy-five foot easement. Where's the seventy-five foot go? In the front?
Rashawn, I'm just...
Opposite the door. Opposite the door, opposite.
Rashawn, would you just close the door? So... Oh, it just echoes in here.
To answer your question, though, uh, no, we have not. Uh, we do need to purchase one.
Okay.
Uh, we have stopped...
Did we ever get the signs put up for Mr. Howells?
No.
You know which one I was, I'm talking about? Michael Howells? Across the street from him, we, we agreed?
Yes, we got that done last time, man.
No parking, did we? There's no parking signs?
Yeah, we got them.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yes, 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 we did.
I was by there today and it's gone.
It's gone? There's three. There's three? There's three signs.
I saw one on the corner. I didn't see one, the house that he's, that's across the street from him. I saw nothing right there.
There's, the middle one's gone then, is what you're saying?
Probably. Uh, but I only saw one sign.
No, there's two, there's two signs. Well, there's one by Public Works. There's one at, uh, Wood Street and then the one at the end.
Okay.
But, uh, I'll check and see if they're gone. They could be gone.
What, whatever. Well, you just, just check on that. Getting back to, getting back to what, what you have as a handle here.
Right, right now. And the reason I say that is your building code and your fire code that you have adopted currently authorizes the fire official to set fire lanes. Doesn't matter if it's on personal property, if it's on city property or wherever it is. If you'll go to the dollar stores, the, you know, there, there's fire lanes established around that building up there. Uh, there's fire lanes, you know, at the Shell Station.
There is.
Yeah. It, it, it's things that you, you already have the capacity to do. It's not like you have to do another ordinance. You know, basically, what I need is somebody to buy the signs so I can get a look back at it.
Okay.
Those signs are...
I looked, I looked, I looked, I looked on the Barco's website today and there, there's two types of signs, there's reflective, non-reflective. The non-reflectives are twenty-five bucks a piece. The, uh, reflective signs are forty dollars a piece. So, you know, we're not talking about a whole lot of money. Eight signs.
How many signs, though?
Eight. It leaves eight. That will replace what I got on the building over there now.
Did you say eight signs?
Eight signs.
You're going to need poles for those on?
We have the poles. We have, uh, poles for the regular signs that we put up. I talked to Don about the, the poles we use now, our square poles, they're no longer round poles because they spin, they move, these square poles move. Plus that they got holes where you can actually mount a sign too, so it doesn't come off. But we have, we have...
It's not those with all the holes and all open down?
Yes.
Can anything a little bit more attractive than, than that?
Yeah. Uh, those are, um, eighty, eighty-seven dollars each.
Well, you know what?
And round poles are basically about sixty, seventy dollars a piece.
Well, some of it doesn't, I don't want anything, I, the citizens don't want anything that looks bad up there.
Are, are we talking about a two-inch galvanized pipe?
Two-inch galvanized.
Sixty-something dollars?
Yep.
You could buy it at Home Depot for...
Yes.
A whole lot less than that.
A whole lot less than that. I mean, I just, I would just blow my mind. I know they're not that expensive.
How tall are they? Seven foot?
Are we just, are we going to buy the sign or what, what are we going to do? We're going to buy the sign and then?
I have a comment though.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, Mr. Howells is going to have a comment after we're through discussing this. So we're looking at four poles and eight signs. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Howells, would you like to?
You're, you're talking, uh, basically a ten-foot property dispute between two buildings. That's all you've got. The community, uh, the city owns the, the pavilion behind it. I have ten foot behind my property that I contend is mine, and I believe the lady does too. You can't come in, and you have an attorney, he'll tell you. You can't come in and take my property without some kind of compensation. All you have to do is part, paint a fire lane ten foot off of those two buildings. Paint a fire lane, make the whole thing a fire lane because you have as much problem in front of the, between the two buildings and the fire station. According to charity day, they're parked in there and walking down the bank. And it's not the two buildings always. A ten-foot park, ten-foot line, the firing can get out without much effort if there's a car parked there. Because we did, we did it, Don, when we poured the concrete. Jackie Dwayne coming over there? No, we had the backup to, to get me to get out of there. But you can do it under the ten foot. Now, with, if, if there's no cars parked there, you got no problem. Look at the measure. The measure, the fire station in my building is less than seventy, sixty foot. Yeah, it's forty-one feet. You know how long the truck is? It's thirty-one foot. Ain't your fire, no, a fire lane down through there. It's the same thing as a line of fifteen minutes loading and unloading. I'm not, and I don't have a problem with somebody pulling that back there and getting out and unloading something and moving their vehicle. Because when they're there parked fifteen or twenty minutes and I have to go down the street to hunt somebody to get it moved, that's my problem. Have you ever had to have yours moved? No, I haven't. And I'm not talking about jail. Has anybody gone over and talked to the lady that owns the building? I have, I have since I had to have removed her car the other day. And did she agree to make some changes? Yeah, I've got pictures of it parked right back there again about a week ago. How long did she stay? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But if you've got a ten-foot parking lane, a ten-foot line there, they can get out. And your officer can do something about it. Until you get your survey. I really don't understand why you're worried about a survey. I put fire lanes on private property at the dollar store. That was part of their agreement.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Okay, if you do a survey and say, this has proved that it's your land, okay, I understand, it's going to be, that's what surveys are supposed to do, to tell you, but we still got to have a fire line back there, even though it's your land and your property, right?
You have an attorney, that's his opinion, I don't know.
Right?
Yes, but the survey will help us understand where the lines are.
Okay.
And I, I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to offer a solution.
I understand, I'm just saying...
I thought I'm trying to do is offer a solution.
I was just wondering, if we're going to do a survey, it costs about triple hundred dollars?
Normal, normal every day, we really don't have that much problem, but occasionally, we do. Uh, our, our biggest problems got, probably going to happen Saturday, going to happen Friday and whatnot down there. Uh, we have more problems during those times than we do in the other times. Occasionally, there'll be cars parked back there. Two Sundays ago, there was two vehicles parked between the telephone pole and the pavilion. They were out and their kids were playing under the pavilion, and that's all well and good. But they had that lane blocked and that's about the only way I can get a fire truck coming straight out is to come out in that direction. And you already own that. That is a problem. You got, in fact, you've got a sign over there, just looked at it a while ago. There is one sign there, it needs to be relocated and some more of the signs split up right there.
What does that sign say, Jenny?
It says no fire, fire lane.
Fire lane, okay.
Yeah. There used to be three down through there.
Well, that's what we're talking about then. Eight signs, right? We backed where we were.
Basically, uh, the chief says that, uh, he needs eight signs and four poles.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Who puts, who's going to put them up?
I'll put them up here.
We need to determine though if they're going to be circle or square. And I want to retract what I said. Eighty-seven dollars is for the pole, the, uh, stop sign and the breakaway.
Eighty-seven dollars is for the pole?
All of it, the setup. The breakaway, the pole and the stop sign is eighty-seven bucks.
I can deal with that. It sounds a little more right.
You have to put the breakaways on them now, is that correct?
But you don't over there, because it's against the fire station, so you wouldn't have to put the breakaways.
Now, I'm just saying, where we put the poles? If somebody backed into it, it would need the breakaway.
Well, there used to be poles in the, on each end of the parking lot there at the bank facing our vote. There were just on poles behind the curb. And, you know, we put those back, those could be just poles planted. I don't know why they have to be breakaway. You're talking across the street?
Well, you just need to determine though what, if you wanted a square or, or a round.
Now, the front of the wheel, straight across the street. Okay, on our vote.
I make a motion, we buy four round poles, eight signs and mark it the way that it was prior to the construction and the tear down of the old community center.
I second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the table to, uh, approve the, uh, item M. Uh, Councilman Guthrie, I've got a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? And discuss and consider necess, necessary actions regarding the installation of traffic control device at the intersection of North Couch Street and, and the Main Street split, East Main Street and Highway Thirty-four intersection and East Travis Street at Couch for the, for the public safety and accident avoidance. Uh, this is what we discussed last, last, uh, last council meeting, uh, Chief.
Yes, sir, I, I really don't have anything else to add on it.
Okay. I've done some survey on myself with, with, in, uh, with the intersection of Couch and Travis. Is that, yeah, it's Travis. What is your, what is your, your intent to do with that intersection?
And you'd put a stop sign there because Travis is a through street, Couch is not.
Correct. Are you, uh, I was, I was talking to the neighbors around there. I'm thinking that we should put up a three-way stop.
Uh, if that's what the...
I'm thinking that's...
City Council wants to...
Yeah, I understand that. But, but there's a lot of traffic, through traffic that...
Yeah.
That the people that live there said, we need a stop sign at all three.
It, it still serves the same purpose, so, yes, that's fine.
Yes. Uh, the other, the other one was, uh, at the split across the street from the gas station?
Yes.
There's nothing there?
There, we have no traffic control.
Okay.
And again, that's, uh, Couch Street is... And again, that's, uh, Couch Street is a through street. Uh, the split is not going back towards seventy-seven.
No, no, I'm not talking about that intersection yet. I'm talking about the intersection.
Coming off of Main, you know, to Thirty-four.
Straight, yes.
Yeah. And there's no, there is absolutely no, uh, traffic control there. Any, a person coming off of Main Street that intersects with Thirty-four right there, right across from Allen.
Okay.
Is, there could be a collision.
Yeah, yes, there's no, there's nothing there.
And we recommended a yield sign for that area.
Okay, on the, uh, North Couch and, and are you calling it, uh?
That's what I call the split.
Does it, the Main Street? Okay, we had some, we had some citizens not wanting in, not wanting to put up anything. That's that curve part of the street where Couch?
Yes.
Couch comes around and intersects?
Well, we have a stop sign.
Uh, there's a stop sign on, on the Couch Street.
Well, I'd have to show you a picture of it, it's actually.
That sign's still in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is this, is this approved or disapproved or partial?
Well, you'll have to decide what you're gonna want on each, on each location.
Okay.
Because none of them, there's no recommendation there as far as the written or stuff.
Apologize, Chief, but.
Uh, we haven't worked with.
It's working.
Okay. Okay, basically, this, this is Allen Gas Station here, this would be Highway Thirty-four, East Mound. Okay, this is, this is Couch Street, okay, you do have a stop sign here for Couch.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what we're talking about is traffic coming this way. They have no traffic control, which means that if a car is coming this way, they both think that they have the right of way. So, and there's no traffic control here, there's no traffic control here. So if you have a car coming this way and a car coming this way, and this car is gonna go straight through on Couch Street up to Highway Thirty-four, and this car's gonna take Couch Street this way, they can have a collision right here.
There's a stop sign on all.
There are not stop signs there, sir, there is one stop sign right there.
One stop sign, where?
Right here. For this traffic going down this way. There's no traffic control here, no traffic control here.
Right, because that's the main street, Couch goes like that.
Couch is, is the main street.
Yeah. Couch is.
Yeah, it is.
Couch is the main street.
Couch is main street.
Jimmy, that curb right there, I was told at one time, used to be a one-way going into town only, you couldn't come back from town going back to. Well, I've had somebody that's been here a long time since.
Absolutely, it really doesn't matter if it was a one-way or not. What the issue is, is that this is a through street.
Right.
This isn't. You have to have some kind of traffic control on this street, since it's not a through street, to slow them down to not, to not have a collision here.
So are you gonna yield or are you gonna stop?
Our recommendation is a stop sign right here, make them stop.
Since there is a stop sign coming this way.
Right.
Right, they stop, that's always been continued traffic.
Exactly.
What do you mean continued traffic?
Meaning if you're coming off of Thirty-four from town.
This way or this.
Right, and you come around.
Uh-huh. That, they don't have a stop sign, that's not their stop sign.
Right, but they have a stop sign.
That's been a major.
So if you come around, you, you don't.
But the problem is, this is not the through street. Okay, so that means that this person here has just as much right of way coming across and, as this person's coming up Couch Street. Yes, ma'am, by law it does. By law, the right of way, it does.
Yes, and I, I agree a whole lot of it. Chief, what if we took, hang on a second, what if we took the stop sign that's there on the far left, right there?
There's there?
Right, if Couch is gonna be our thoroughfare up and down.
Uh-huh.
Why should they have to stop if we move the stop sign across to where we want to put a traffic control device? And then that jot that comes off of, off of, off of Thirty-four on the Couch.
Is the only one that has to stop.
Is the only one that has to stop.
Okay.
Couch has the full thoroughfare going back and forth.
I got you. And that's, that's a good option.
Mr. Richards had said, and that makes a lot of sense, because if you put one there, you don't need Couch to, to stop at all.
Basically, all we're doing is moving a stop sign.
Moving it over to here.
But aren't you a stop sign just a little ways up from that?
This is, there's another stop, there's like, the Main Street comes through, there's a stop sign up here.
Yeah, I see a sweet stop sign over there, and a block.
Yeah.
Uh, that's because of poor engineering from the previous.
Yeah, it's just a bad, bad intersection.
So we can go back with, uh, a white marker, the white stripe.
Mm-hmm.
Well, set it up with the sign, and what people can start seeing it.
And then if you come off, where it comes off of Thirty-four, right there, coming towards Couch, you know, before it, where it first comes off, you could put up another sign that says, stop ahead. Maybe give them one more, stop ahead.
Yeah.
With a stop and a white line across, and then, and then Couch.
Train.
And then Couch would have full thoroughfare.
Yeah, yes.
And we have a traffic control device there that would prevent any collisions or.
That would make them have the traffic control device, they would, this, they would have full right of way, they would have to yield right of way.
Right.
And, and there is a yield sign on up here going on Two Thirty-four, correct?
Yeah, there is.
And you know, you talk about up here, yeah, yeah, you don't even have to have that, because you're in a major.
I understand that, but there still needs to be something there for people to see. You got somebody coming out of town?
Somebody coming out of town.
And doesn't know.
The other thing is, is being able to see that stop sign.
Yeah, we'd have to trim some of those.
We'd have to trim some of those.
Have to cut some cedar trees.
Technically, by, or city ordinance, it's the responsibility of the, uh, homeowner at that location to do that. But we more likely would do that as, you know, while we were installing the sign.
It would be but a couple of lamps just to get it up off.
Just to make sure.
It's a cedar tree.
I'm serious.
Y'all load it, I'll do it, I'll fix it.
So, so you're saying, if, when you, if I'm, if I'm going out from Thirty-four and going on that little curb, I'm gonna have to stop when I get to Couch Street?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna stop and get to that other street, yes, you're. I, I, I'm like, it's a high. I, I never.
Off of, she just said off of Thirty-four, onto the little.
The curb.
Curb to Couch, yes.
I would stop right there at Couch.
Yes.
But that, I, we can get that on every paper and flyer, because as long as I, I lived here back in the nineteen sixties, that, that, that little curb was the right of way.
That's, that's been a lot of ways.
Always been the right, and I think, I think, I think, I think, put the date, the simple market out there, and I would have people use that more. You know, they'd use that.
That's not the third street.
If it was, it would have been called, uh, Main Street.
But I think that that was always the thoroughfare.
Yeah.
You don't have.
I, I never even knew, I never went on that little couch street back in the day. I just go and do it.
Yes.
Well, like I said, that, that situation was brought to me from a residence there that lived in that neighborhood, that had a problem with that intersection.
I just wear the.
The simple thing to do to, Mr. Mayor, would be to stripe the center of the street.
I, I concur with that.
Yeah.
That would be your simple thing, because ninety percent of your traffic off of Main Street goes to the left, not on Couch Street.
But how would that solve a right of way problem?
You got a center stripe, you don't cross it.
That, a center stripe does nothing for right of way. You're the chief, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I, I just didn't know, I didn't even know Couch was the name of that street going down that front step here, I didn't know what Couch, but I know it's always been right there.
And the other proposal was a three-way stop and?
The other proposal was, it's on here.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that corner. The citizens out there that I polled would like to see a three-way stop versus just a one-way stop on Couch.
What about yield signs?
Are you talking about Travis and Couch, or Couch and?
Travis and Couch.
There is a stop, there is a stop at Travis coming on to Couch.
Yes.
And there needs to be a stop on Couch coming in front of Lloyd's house.
I think he's talking about Travis and Couch though, not, not this.
Yeah, well, Jackie Kate's corner.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Explain where you would put those, where I can understand who lives there. Like Lloyd's house, or Donna Jaggies, or Miss Oliphants?
Let him know.
Because I don't know what y'all are talking about.
Okay, it's a bad intersection again.
Right.
But this is Travis Street here, okay, this is College. This is Travis Street. What happened is, is for some reason, instead, this is a through street, this is all Travis, both going this way. We do have a stop sign right here.
We do.
Which, which is good.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is that when people come off of, off, this is Thirty-four, they're coming off Thirty-four, and they're coming down Couch Street by the mayor's house. Okay, when they get right here, this turns into Travis Street. And it's a through street. So if this car is going this way, and he's gonna go straight through, he's got right of way, because it's a, it's a straight through, it's a, uh, through street. This car, because of the curb, thinks he has the right of way, because it's always been that way. And when, when you have that, that potentially, you have a problem with an accident right here in this intersection, right?
I, I, I understand the argument, but how many wrecks has been there in the past five years? I mean, seriously?
I can't answer that, because I don't know, I'm sure there's been a few, but the problem is, is I can't consider something.
Oh, there's no money involved in putting up a sign.
Yeah.
There's absolutely no money to the city.
What are we looking at? What do we talk about, a forty-dollar pole and a forty?
Eighty-seven, if you want a stop sign, a breakaway and a pole.
Right.
Got it.
But hey, you know what, say it was a hundred and fifty, if it saved somebody's life or prevented somebody from being injured, it was worth every dime.
Yeah, but come on, man, really? Yeah, but come on, man, really?
Are they gonna, well, well, it's way off the problem with a stop sign.
There'll be, there'll have to be a white stripe coming across.
Yield sign. Again, again, ninety percent of your traffic, ninety percent of your traffic is going through the school and everybody, and we got stop signs now where we can drop the block.
This is my recommendation to the city council for the traffic control devices that I presented. I'm making concessions that, yes, a three-way stop would be sufficient there. I agree with the, uh, moving the stop sign over to, from the little curve to Couch Street to make that sufficient, and then a yield sign where we'd sit. And I hope that the city council.
We appreciate your, appreciate you, uh, doing this.
Is that where you was talking about, the three-way stop sign?
That one stop sign that's on Jackie Kate's house, there's not a lot of room, it's gonna be pretty much in the yard.
Well, I, I.
You got the water line and the gas line.
From Travis, from Travis coming this way from College, I don't foresee putting a, I myself personally don't see putting anything there. There's no reason in having that traffic stop. If you stop at Couch and Travis, and Travis and Couch, that will control the device. That's my opinion. That's just, you know, that's what.
Well, they were talking, uh, the neighbors were, that I talked to, were talking about the school buses and, and other, going, it's a, going back and forth to the school, leaving the school.
Are they talking about convenience of the school bus, is that what they're saying?
No, they're trying to get them to slow down.
They gotta slow down for their curve anyway.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you what the citizen stuff told me.
Sure.
They'd like to see a three-way stop there.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be forever, does it?
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, I'll make, this is my motion. We've already got the, the stop sign at Travis coming on Couch, I make a motion, we put the stop sign at Couch at Travis where you have it there. Uh, the three-way, I'm not, I don't want that. Um, I make a motion that we put the stop sign from where we talked about coming off of 34 to the curve, making Couch the through thoroughfare, so moving the stop sign from Couch coming back towards the cemetery, moving that over to that intersection, striping it, putting stripes on all of it, and then putting the.
Stripe bars?
Stripe, stripe bars, and then also the warning sign prior to coming off 34 where it says stop ahead, okay? And then, uh, a yield sign would be sufficient coming off of Main on to 34. That's my motion.
That, uh, the white paint.
Okay, I've got a motion on the table.
That's fine, whatever it takes.
For everything that Councilman Guthrie just said, I can't repeat it all.
I second.
And I have a second by Councilman Perkins. All in favor? Frank?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's unanimous. Okay, item O, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding transfer of funds from the general money market account to the general operating account until funds, funds come in from the property tax. Ms. Murdoch?
By now, the property taxes have not been, they're, they rarely ever come in early, but because of, um, the situation, pay increases and all of that, we need to carry on and conduct business as we should, and we need to transfer money from the money market account to the general account until our, our funds come in from the property taxes.
Okay, will these, these funds be put back into the money market once it gets here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What are we talking about as far as, is we talking about a general lump sum, lump sum right now, or just as we need it?
As we need it.
Okay.
I'm not gonna transfer more than thirty thousand dollars at a time, but as we need it, um, and I certainly don't want to transfer any more than, than we would need.
Okay, and, uh, when it does come in?
The city, the, the funds will be transferred back.
Transferred back and also make a note to, to let the council know that it's been put back.
Terry, is this for the siren and everything too?
No, um, the siren is coming out of the higher education fund, and we can't purchase that siren until we get those funds, those last funds that were approved, so we're waiting on those funds to get here.
I'll make a motion, we do the money transfer.
Councilman Guthrie has made a motion to, uh, approve the transfer.
I second it.
Councilman Jackson seconds it. All in favor? unanimous. And item six, closed session, Ms. Murdoch, you wanna read that?
The Italy City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, to discuss the matter as to below. The city council also reserves the right to consult in closed session with the attorney on any posted agenda, item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one B. Item number one, discuss necessary actions regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the Public Works Director Dean Carroll and all matters incident and related thereto. Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four.
Okay, we're gonna recess seven, twelve.
Or go like, going towards Italy Cemetery?
Right, right.
Item numbers, we're back in session at, uh, seven forty-eight? No, seven thirty-eight. Okay, we've reconvened into an open session, we've discussed and, we need to discuss and take, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding the appointment, employment, reassignment, duties, discipline, dismissal of Public Works Director Dean Carroll and all matters related hereto there. Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-four. Uh, Councilman Guthrie, would you, uh, explain to the public?
Uh, there was a review done of the documentations of allegations, uh, there's no action to be taken.
Okay, I'll second, I need a motion. I'll second.
No, it's not an action.
No action taken, we don't need anything. Okay. Councilmember comments? Uh, Frank, let's start with you.
Tell me I'm good, I won't. Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Councilman Perkins?
I have none, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's, everyone, thank you all for coming out.
Councilman.
Just thanks to everybody coming out tonight, and, uh, uh, really gets me the allegation of this sort be made, and, you know, it's confidential, you can't even sign the form, so that really bothers me.
We count.
But, uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight and wish everybody a Happy New Year and, uh, just enjoy your blessings that we have and our saving.
Amen. Councilman Richards?
Well, I kinda echo what Bruce said, and I'd like to say to Dean, Chief, and to Terry that we thank y'all for doing a great job, and we behind you a hundred percent and keep up the good work.
Councilman Guthrie?
I concur.
He concur, there we go. I think ever, today, today's a, a good day. Uh, all the council members have a lot of good things to say about, well, Chief, number one, uh, Dean Carroll, he's got a lot of, lot going. Uh, Clint? You got a lot going?
A little bit. Just a little.
I guess you catch everything that, that Dean does.
He can throw you a basketball.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. And there is a, you were talking about where the water was going, you know that lake is still in front of the Mansels?
Yeah, that one, uh, one behind the, the cafe and, uh, one on College.
One on College. I, I've got a question, is there, is there a, an easement alleyway, whatever, behind Mansels?
I don't know.
You know, there's a utility.
Yeah.
Runs back there.
Uh, yes, it do too. And behind you, where those power poles that go to that lift station, there's a twenty-foot easement.
Do you have any?
Uh, whenever they were looking to, uh, build the dollar store over there, that's where I got it, I'll have to hunt it down for you.
Would you please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanna, I wanna thank everybody for coming out, um, I wanna thank all of our service people, veterans, and our public works people, and that includes everybody in the city. Uh, this last, I was very impressed with how it really went. We all, they all pulled together, we all pulled together. When we had the pipeline ordeal in Milford, Milford people, uh, was, was very grateful for what the city eventually did for them. Uh, that's a reflection on, on Chief Hill, Dean Carroll, Ron, you did a good job over there at, and Clar, uh, Clarice, Clarice went over there also. I didn't hear anything but good, good praises about them.
Actually, Madhela was there all day.
That's right, Madhela was there, I saw her, and, and, uh, Sean Martin was there, Sergeant Martin.
All of our officers were there.
And, and, uh.
Enter, let's see, I'll take.
Yeah, I was getting ready to get, I was getting to that, uh, that portion. Oh, heaven, what's her, Ms. Richards, what, Shelby.
Shelby.
Shelby, she did a good job, and, and, oh, and, Mr. Ri, Officer Richards, they handled the media quite well, they put, they set up a spot for them, they treated them with a lot of respect, and, uh.
And we gave them free pizza.
Whoa, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Gotta make friends with the media.
This is true, this is true. And Terry and Becky, y'all held down the fort, didn't you? And Ms. Sue, Ms. Sue.
And Fire Department.
And Fire Department, they were, they were out there, uh, helping the, uh, helping there at the, at the dome. But I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're not, we probably won't be meeting until January, but, uh, so should we ever meet at Park, the blessings of heaven be upon us. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at seven forty-three.
You want me to speak to this?
Yeah, we're gonna put them in the file with the rest of the stuff.